Swimming pool of the pool deck. Just another view of the fence surrounding the pool. And the shade structure, it's completed form. This is on the backside of the barn that we're proposing to convert. So the barn would obscure this from Old Primrose Hill Road for most part. Maybe just for more plans, well, there's any other pictures. I should also point out that we're also applying for a fence permit. We have a privacy fence on the site which requires approval from the planning board because you cannot see clearly. So we also sent an application along with our proposed detached accessory dwellings for a fence permit on this property. Before you get to the floor plan, one other thing to point out is that we're not proposing to utilize the entire existing barn for the detached accessory dwelling. It's too big for that purpose. The town of Ryanbeck has a limitation of 900 square feet for such a use. This barn being 1,750 square feet is too large to convert all of the barn. Now that being said, we are concurrently processing with the zoning board of appeals. And our application asks that we be granted another 300 square feet of living area so that we can use 1,200 square feet of 1,750. So we would be taking away 550 square foot of barn to do what we're proposing here. And what we're proposing is a first floor, which would be the entire existing floor plan of the barn. To orient yourself, this is the shade structure and then the swimming pool would be right here. And this would be Old Primrose Hill Road on this side. So the idea is that there's a door that comes in so you can access it from the main house below. There's three doors that would open up to the pool because this will serve a dual purpose of being a cool house as well as a guest cottage or detached accessory dwelling. And then it has a full kitchen, a mechanical room back here, a bathroom, and then just a very large living dining area in this section. And this is the section that we would cut away the second floor from. So what we would do is take that 550 square feet if we're successful in getting the variance and we take it out of the second floor. We create a very large cathedral ceiling effect in that portion of the barn. And then above this area, there are two bedrooms proposed. So you go up the staircase, again, this is the open area. And you get to these two bedrooms and another bathroom on the second floor. So the idea being the lower section serves as a cool house as well as the kitchen and living room. Four bedrooms above, the bedrooms are fairly self-contained with their own bathroom above. So two bedrooms, two bathrooms, all totally 1,200 square feet, which means stripping away 550 square feet if we're successful in getting the variance. If we're not, we would be faced with a 900 square foot limitation on this building. And then just some elevations of what's proposed. Again, these are the three doors that would face the pool. Again, you can open them up, go in and out freely on the nicer days so that it functions very well as a shady spot for us when we're using the swimming pool. You can go inside and use the bathroom to get a drink. This is the elevation that would face the driveway. And then this side faces Old Primrose Hill Road. And this side faces essentially the main house. And there's that other door that would primarily be used to access it coming up from the main house so that you wouldn't have to enter the pool area to get into this building. Probably everything I want to show.
Can you give us that visual for this one? Could you clarify?
Sure. It's a, I want to thank Michael Fraser for sending us his report from the field review.
Yep.
And gave us a very comprehensive report on the building, which has been moved. He gathered the details and I think it was very helpful to get that. So point being that this barn was located, we believe, in Stasburg at some point, but brought to the property many, many years ago. From the road, I think we were struck by the fact that you really do not see the pool or any of the construction. You'll see the pergola a little bit maybe behind the fence, but the pool is completely hidden. That activity cannot be seen from the road at all. So the view of this property from Old Primrose is unchanged literally by this project except for the privacy fence. I think the changes to the building are sensitive. I think it's retaining the character of the building. I think Michael agrees that, you know, given the circumstances of the move and everything, this is really a very modest change. There are a couple of things we noticed in the field. I think I asked you if the privacy fence would weather in terms of its tone over time and you weren't sure. So we chatted a little bit about that. It could be softened perhaps a little bit from the road with some shrubs or vines or something that would tone that down a bit. And the only other thing we noticed was that all the mechanicals for the pool are outside of the fence. And that is in the direct viewshed of the neighbor. And I also think it would be nice to get some, a few shrubs in there just to sort of screen the cool mechanicals from the neighbor's view. That's about all I would add. I think it's a very, very low impact on the road, on the viewshed from the road, on the property itself.
I concur perfectly with what Melody has said. It's very sensitive. Feels as though it's carefully done and well protected. And Michael, thank you very much for the additional information. That was very helpful in terms of the origins of the barn and...
And Darren was very hospitable in allowing us to spend a good amount of time there and ask him a lot of questions.
I'd love to see your letter at some point.
The only question, Michael, that came up in your report, and I'll ask it, but I'm sure you're going to have the answer to it, is how Michael brought up the removal of a substantial portion of the floor would require the introduction of a substitute to tie it better. We anticipate the arid building can handle this challenge. So I'm guessing you're going to confer or concur that you can handle that challenge.
I didn't mean that would require a what?
He says the removal of a substantial portion of that floor would require the introduction of a substitute to tie it together. We anticipate the arid building can handle this challenge.
And the intent on that is to actually leave the post and beam in place? So we'd be stripping away some joists, but we would be leaving the true post and beam structure in place, which would provide that support for the exterior walls and create kind of an interesting situation as we looked up the timber frame structure.
I don't think you anticipate this as a problem, but if you don't get the variance, do you have a backup plan for the interior design?
I mean, I think we just have to figure it out with less square footage. Maybe we'll try and be opening up the entire second floor.
Michael, anything else you wanted to add?
Well, it's, our opinion regarding the requirement that leads this to be reviewed by the planning board is the issue of the square footage. And quite frankly, from an historic preservation point of view, not from a lawyer's point of view, is the more of that floor on the second floor remains intact, the better from a structural, from a historic, from our point of view. But, you know, my hope is that there are reasons other than just trying to meet the ZBA requirements and trying to come closer so that you're not having as much of a request for a variance, that there are other reasons for wanting to do that. And there may be, I mean, we talked about, you know, the fact that you've got the two bedrooms and then you're going to have some open space there to look out on. You know, it gives folks who are downstairs there also a better view of the entire barn. It's a very tall barn. It's going to be a big issue if you're using it in colder weather to just be able to heat the place. But, you know, yeah, that's, that's the only, you know, I, I don't want to get in between CPA and you guys and the applicant in terms of the floor, but from a structural point of view, the historic point of view, the more of that barn that can remain as is, the better. The flip side of that is that, you know, barns get moved all the time. Many of our most, the barn that's up at Quitman, at the Palatine Farmstead, was not originally on that site. But it's a 1,700 barn. That is a very historic structure. But other barns like this one not only get moved, but it gets taken apart from a larger barn. And I spent some time looking at the Stasburg site, trying to figure out where it originally was. I don't know. But even though this is not what I would classify, you know, what people in Hudson Valley vernacular architecture would call an historic barn, it's still a very attractive structure. It gives you a feel of the kind of community, agricultural community, agricultural site that this once was. This was a dairy barn. The owner of this property, Mr. Bohm, back in the 1930s, ran a dairy farm there. He had chickens. He needed a place to house those cows when they weren't outside grazing. It was a 54 acre site at the time. This recalls that situation. From that point of view, yes, there's a story there and it's worth remembering. So, you know, I, from that point of view, the more of the structure that remains, the better. But, you know, I also recognize that the ZBA has some principles that it needs to maintain. And that needs to be balanced with what we're looking at here. So on balance, our opinion is that this proposal makes a lot of sense. It's a way to use a structure that's been empty for a long period of time. There were three barns on this property back before 1974. You saw the foundation of one of them, all three of them gone.
CAD, do you have any comment? Any questions from members of the planning board?
Yes, I have a question. Does the owner agree with the very reasonable recommendations made by Melody regarding landscaping?
Certainly. The owners already put in quite a bit of landscaping. I want to say, you know, the final bill for that was about $10,000 worth of trees and shrubs, including some in the area of the generator and pool equipment. But, you know, certainly we can supplement with a few more. Really do that all along.
Questions, comments from the public? Hearing none, I very much propose a public hearing. All in favor? After your second, first? I'll take the second. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, I have a reservation. Okay, the town of Ryanbeck Planning Board has access follows on the application by Old Primrose LLC for site plan approval, special use permit, and the town code chapter 125. With conversion of the bond to accessory dwelling at 6 Primrose Hill Road in the RC5 rural countryside zoning district. The deed of funds proposed act is type 2 under seater for which board and environmental party views included. Based upon the views submitted information, we reinforce the planning board members and CAD members on their site visit with the project property and the findings of the ZBA requiring variance application files to propose which consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. I think I'll say at this point that Braden Derrin, what's our last question? And he proved that I, of course, would be conditional upon the variance being granted by the ZBA.
Sure.
If for some reason they don't give it, then you just come back to us just for amended application, you know, then act from that. So I'm conditional upon receiving that. In respect of the application of such use permit authorized work, finds the proposed work an intended use to be consistent with general standards of such use permits. The grant discussion use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approved by the planning board. In respect of the application of site plan approval, finds the proposed work an intended use to be consistent with town code chapter 125, 125-75. We approve the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by synergy design dated December 20th, 2019. We authorize the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan on the applicant's satisfaction of below conditions and or requiring within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in form number special within town code chapter 125, except as may modify to a lesser extent by the chair in consideration of filing distribution requirements. Payment of any outstanding fees and or reimbursable amounts due to county grindup related review and processing of applications set through this resolution. Understood of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein for many other town, county, state, or other agency as required to undertake the proposed action. Could I have a motion to approve?
So will.
Second? Hold the board. Kathy? Woody?
All right.
Edna? Karen? Melody? And I vote aye. Oh, there you are. I come on this time didn't help. Okay. Our next public hearing? Richard Ropnek, 348 359 Main Street, site plan approved and construction of a shed.
Hi, I'm Richard Ropnek. So the structural questions, the shed, indicated. And the purpose of the shed is to give me additional storage area for brown skin room and property management equipment, which is right now housed in the garage. The house, the shed is what I call tucked behind the house, just here. So it's a little bit visible from the road. As much as I can. It's very close to the 75 foot setback. And so I think it's best place for it.
And there's a shed that's being removed.
Yes. This, this one is being removed. This one is being fixed up until, I can replace it with another application. This one is small enough, this one is not.
Okay.
Oh, yes. This is looking at the, the back of the, I guess it would be the southeast corner. And a little bit down on this side. This is from, this is looking at it from the, in essence, the angle from the road. Could be the northwesterly elevation. This is the northeasterly elevation. And then this is looking from the north. The building somewhat on angles from our comp description. And so the two doors are bypass doors for access. And there's a, there's a light fixture that I think was on submitted, that's not on drawn. This is from a modification of a running shed from Bayworth's. That's the elevation of the back canopy shed that lets to the structure we just looked at. It has also on the, that's looking from west side. And that's from the east side. That's the light fixture that's being posted. And I can put up two or three items. There's an argument towards less lighting or more lighting in terms of access to the front. Right now, turn up there, that's for one.
Is that done? I can't tell where you were.
It's, it's seven, I'll turn around. Two or three shots, we have one more.
There, thank you.
Sorry, delayed for the episode.
It's very flexible. Sharon, I did site visit, Sharon?
Yeah, it's actually back, back from the road, you really aren't going to see it. And it's definitely improved, but, so it's, it's out of that one. What's the color?
Pardon?
Is it wood siding?
Yeah, this is a board and then wood siding. The doors that will be made on the site are also pined and stained. And the roof is a standing seam metal roof. And I think the couloir is copper. And there's a weathered rain proposed. I'll pick out the angle again.
So isn't the structure being removed obviously pretty sad shape? So it's definitely, you really aren't going to see it behind the existing house and whatnot. So we couldn't see any problems or any issues. According to CAD, that's okay. Any questions or other comments from members of the planning board? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Hearing none, I very much propose a public hearing.
So will second.
All in favor? Very good. I have another resolution. The town of Ryanbeck Planning Board, Harry, access follows on the application of Richard Ropnek for a site plan approval on the town code chapter 125 for the construction of a shed at 348 359 Main Street in the RA10 rural agriculture and RCO ranked overlay zoning districts. The deed of funds proposed act is type 2 under seater for which board and environmental party views included. Based upon the view of submitted information, we reinforce the planning board members and CAD, WAC members on their site visit with the project property finds the proposed work is consistent with the objectives and regulations of chapter 125. In respect of the application of site plan approval, finds the proposed work an intended use to be consistent with town chapter 125. Includes the application inclusive of the application materials and plans by Meddenback and Eggers dated December 16th, 2019. Authorizes the planning board chair to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's set affection of below conditions and requiring within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan in form number special within town code chapter 125, except as may be modified to a lesser number of the shed in consideration of filing distribution requirements. Payment of any outstanding fees and reimbursed amounts due to county grindup related review and processing of the application subject to this resolution. Understood of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required herein for many other town, county, state, weather agency as required to undertake the proposed action. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So will.
Second?
Second.
Hold the board. Edna? Sharon? Melody? Kathy? Woody? And I will go aye. So you're all set?
Thank you.
Okay. Our next public hearing, Rockledge, 492 Act 11. Do you want to repeat what you told us earlier and that we will also then have a motion to continue the public hearing?
Good evening, Mark Lovinsky, representing Rockledge. We have finalized our groundwater investigation on site and have determined that we have adequate water supply on site for the project. So the, have done initial pump testing within the, there will actually be three wells on the property. Just to, just to verify adequate yields necessary to support the project. And so our next step is to notify adjoining landowners and allowing them to participate in a, in a pump test for not only required yields on our property, but to monitor adjoining wells to, you know, to monitor to see if there are any influence from the project on the adjoining properties. Those documents are drafted, just waiting from the hydrogeology, the dates to be included. They'll be sent out registered mail to adjoining owners. Right now, we chose 1,500 feet as an offset distance from the property to notify owners. I'll provide all those documents to, to the planning board. And so, and then they can also be circulated as required. If there's any other joiners who wish to be included within the, within the testing, we'll certainly, we'll accommodate that.
Any questions from members of the board? Any questions from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. What I'd like to hear is a motion to continue this public hearing until April 20th at 7:00 PM. Second? All in favor? Very good, thank you. All right. Our next is Ryanbeck Villas LLC, New York State 9G and Middle Road, site plan special experiment, button permit, and minor subdivision. No? That's the last one.
710.
That's 710.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll update in a minute.
My, my manners.
Can you get a pardon?
So.
Excuse me? Yeah, the site plan, please. Let's go to, yeah, can I zoom in on this?
What's that?
Can I zoom in on this? That's, that's probably, yeah, that's probably good. Good evening, Mark Lovinsky, representing Ryanbeck Villas. So, Michael, do you want me to, how should I proceed?
I guess the thing, perhaps I should say a few thoughtful words.
Okay.
The planning board and the CAD did a site visit to this site a couple of days back and everything, and we went over it. I think it's safe to say it's a very difficult site, number of constraints. It's not something that's, would be an easy site to build on, given its terrain and whatnot. We felt that this project needs significant restructuring, a significant, significant reworking. Among the things that probably will not be committed on the property are an event center. Right now, it's not allowed by the town of Ryanbeck zoning law in this zoning district. It is my reading from the local zoning committee that's been working on, working on redeeming different aspects of our zoning law, including event centers. And what input we have had from the town board that there is not an interest in having an event center on this site. It's not that big a site. We also feel that perhaps the magnitude of what is being, is being suggested for the site is more than the site could actually handle. Going to the site, site visits are always very, very helpful. We were made aware of how close the residences are to the site along the backside. We were made very aware of the topography of the site, which is very attractive from an aesthetic standpoint, but extraordinarily challenging for building a project of this, of this nature. We, at the present time, the town is looking at the 9G corridor in terms of buffers, things of that sort. And there's some question about variance that's being asked for for this project, whether or not that would be something that would be welcomed by the town at this point in time, given the review that's being done. So what the applicant is asked to do is have the opportunity to sit down with a couple of members of the planning board, engineer a couple of other people. It would not be a workshop or a public meeting at this point, just to go over some suggested ways of trying to address changes to this. And basically, I think it's fair to say, and Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're basically going to have a very different application for this project on this site. And we can certainly take comments and things of that sort, and certainly if anyone else wishes to speak, because the whole planning board is there as well as the CAD. What you're seeing tonight is not going to happen as you see it tonight. Just so you're aware of that. Just like to open up the members of the planning board to speak and then the CAD, and then I'll open up the public if anyone wishes to make comments and that sort. Edna?
Is the plan going forward to respect the 200 foot block front edge of horn?
I think at this point we have to. I'm not sure exactly how the town board, there was a discussion of possibly a moratorium when it changes along the 9G corridor. Given that there's a great deal of potential development along 9G.
Right.
Between the light, the nine, the three, the 99G light and the river crossing light. So I would, my suggestion to look at it in that light, because that's basically the situation we have right now.
I feel strongly that unless there is a moratorium and the area is going to be reviewed, the zoning area is going to be reviewed, that the zoning law requirement should be respected because I think it is essential to the character and the identity of this gateway to the town. You know, that's what's expressed in the zoning law. That's why you have this very unusual 200 foot. The hope is that those huge blocks or whatever will remain somewhat rural looking. So I don't think it should be subject to variance. I think that if that's reflected by the applicant, this board should recommend against it.
Well, at this point, it's my understanding that the applicant is asked to have the... Actually, before the Z B A postponed for now into the planning board is active.
That's correct.
And so, in essence, I would say, given where we are now with the application being reworked, the variance request is set aside at the moment at any rate. And I know that the Z B A will be lead agency. The Z B A will not be taking any action anyway until we can come up with a secret determination.
And I can say we are exploring an alternative that considers the... Once again, it's not... It's a... I believe it's a condition... It's a special permit condition with regard to the required setback for this particular use on the property. And so that alternative is being developed and considered. In other words, it'll be a two hundred foot setback from New York State Route 9G for any development and, you know, construction of structures for the hotel.
Additionally, Michael, my reading is that this is a corner lot and the lot frontage applies to Middle Road as well.
I believe that's also correct. From my reading, of course, ask Michelle to formalize that. Other questions or comments from the planning board?
Uh, Mark, one of the comments came in from somebody in the neighborhood about off-road access. In other words, similar to the one that we have up here at Tops, Williams and Craig Union, parallel or however, next one entrance into an area. I think that's a very valid approach, and I think you should consider... Whatever the plan turns out to be, that that should be part of that plan.
That was absolutely part of this plan, Woody. I mean, it was, you know, planned as... You know, there's also been, you know, application made to the New York State D O T. Applicant has retained a traffic consultant, Craig Manning Engineering, and had... We've had extensive talks with D O Ts. And right now, their recommendation was single access for the property. And that was... And that's when there was consideration for an event space. Since that's no longer going to be part of the application, it will remain single access with single access to Route 9G. And then there will be a road that will be... That will allow access to the hotel units that parallels Route 9G. So it's essentially what you just...
Except that you have adjoining properties that also have curb cuts going down 9G. And I think if you could... That could be eliminated. That would be positive. Because 9G is a death trap. I mean, they have... At the bridge approach with a traffic light, they have all kinds of accidents. This is just, in my opinion, a compound.
So you're referring to the four brothers?
Yeah.
And the machine shop adjacent to that?
That type of...
Okay. Well, we'll...
Something to say.
We'll take a look at that.
I guess there's another kind I wanted to make, is I think there may be a source of confusion. Carzoning law permits sixty rooms for a hotel. And there was some thought, I think, by the applicant that that met sixty keys. On a previous application before the planning board, the zoning enforcement officer at the time made a determination that sixty rooms means sixty rooms. The Department of Health in Dutchess County considers a bedroom to be occupied by two people when you're setting up septic systems and things of that sort. So the town of Rhinebeck considers a bedroom to be a bedroom. Multiple bedrooms are a suite, not a bedroom. There was some thought for some of these units that there were going to be multiple bedrooms in some of the units that were neighboring, meaning there's ninety bedrooms in this development. There would be sixty, the maximum is sixty bedrooms. So there's no... I realize there may be some confusion about that. Anything else from the planning board members? All right. Members of the public, any comment or question you'd like to have tonight? We will be continuing this public hearing, and at the next public hearing, there'll be a presentation of a, I believe, significantly revamped plan.
I haven't been shy before. Cornelia Gallo, Ackers Road, know I'm not here to talk about Rockledge. I appreciate your diligence and all your concerns, and I think it echoes most of those of us here. Edna, thank you for yours. Woody, the traffic. I do think that the traffic on 9G has been an issue. There have been so many accidents, so that is a concern. I also think we need to look at Rhinebeck as a whole, and do we really have a need for another hotel? If you look at the existing hotels in Rhinebeck, do we have occupancy that deems before Maribou another hotel? We now have a new hotel, and do we really need... Is it our fourth? So I think that's a concern. I don't want Rhinebeck to become Hyde Park, where your hotels close for half the year or, you know, causing downtown Rhinebeck to become a ghost town. So I think the traffic and the need for a hotel are my concerns with this project.
Thank you. Anyone else tonight? Yes. Okay. What's the comments again?
So, I'm Chris Capo, and I live in Rhine. I live at Pars Park. I do appreciate the comments that were made and the sentiment about the event center. Many of us in the neighborhood were very concerned about the possibility of spot zoning on that parcel, and it would have been, I think, a problem for us if that had happened. So I appreciate the retraction of that idea. I have a couple of questions about the project going forward. There was some discussion about each of these rooms having a kitchen. Is that still going to be in scope?
If you could actually direct to the planning board.
Okay. Yep, I'm sorry.
So that you directed the planning board?
Yep, yep. I don't know the protocol.
That's all right.
But that has been a discussion amongst members of the planning board, something that's really more or less suites with a living room and a small kitchen and a couple bedrooms. That's been under discussion. There has been concern by members of the planning board that in some respects, this tended to look more like an apartment rather than a, you know, a hotel, you know, transient housing, one, two nights, something like that. So like the deep ones, or even like the album without the spot. So that has been a topic of discussion and a concern.
Okay. All right. I would just like to also echo the young lady's comments that she just made about the need for another hotel in the area. And the location of this particular project, given the fact that it was originally stated with the idea of having some kitchens and, you know, this extended stay idea, when you have... When you look at the overall benefit to Rhinebeck and the town's comprehensive plan, you know, weighing how that all fits together, you know, the vision of the town, traffic concerns and things like that, my initial reaction when I saw this and the idea of extended stay was that based on the location, this may very end up... Well, end up being sort of a commute origin for Kingston. So now you've created, you know, these dwelling spaces that people that work in Kingston are going to have a place to essentially live and commute back and forth and...
Well, technically, even for extended stay, it's hopefully limited to thirty days. Now, that doesn't mean you couldn't then go and keep in your car that night and then come back, I suppose, but if you were really desperate.
Right.
But I think that there was a concern that possibly this could morph, perhaps, misfortunes or something other than a, you know, a transient overnight, one or two night stay type of institution.
Exactly. That's one of the concerns that we had, that that would happen.
And we had that discussion. And the applicant, you know, been quite open, just sitting down and discussing the concerns and the different sort of problems that he's potentially associated with this project. It's interesting that when the comprehensive plan and zoning law were adopted, the only two places a hotel is allowed in the town of Rhine, it's either the village, Daisy and Rhinebeck, which is probably not even for another hotel, and this particular small commercial district on Manish.
Right. Yeah. Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What do I have?
Yes.
Add a clause that we...
Sure.
Some of the neighbors have expressed concern that this kind of suite collection of rooms might not be successful. And then therefore, you know, there'd be this empty building, something that would fail. And it seems to me that it could be helpful for the board and for the neighbors if there is some kind of information, marketing research, whatever, that shows that these kinds of facilities have been successful in this area or, you know, in the state someplace. But that might be helpful for people to understand how they're used typically and whether they're successful.
Okay.
Yeah, Melody?
The other thing I would kind of piggyback on what Edna said is the question does come up routinely regarding is there a need for accommodations in Rhinebeck? And by extension, I would say in Northern Dutchess. And I happen to know that there's significant data available for Dutchess County tourism that suggests there is a need, most specifically in Northern Dutchess for rooms, hence the growth, the rapid growth of hotels in Kingston. But I don't think you've made the case in your application for that need. And again, I think data attached to your application that specifies what tourism and others are finding is something we all should look at and be able to consider. So I think that that's noticeably absent from your application and is critical to having people understand why you're suggesting this. I mean, anecdotally, we know with the Fisher Center and other places in Rhinebeck, and we know with the Fairgrounds, that there are times that people are driving to Albany to get rooms for events here. So, you know, there is... There is an argument that could be made that we're losing sales tax dollars here that's crossing the river. So that's up to you to prove.
That's a great suggestion, and we'll reach out to Dutchess County for that information.
I mean, because you hear the question, it's not going to go away. And so if you want these folks to understand why they should hear what you're asking to do and maybe get behind it, you've got to give them the facts that state that.
Understood. Thank you.
Uh, the questions? Yes.
John of Palaola, I live at 340 Wardenburg Road, and I'm also the proprietor of the old Rhinebeck Inn. Do you hear me okay?
No.
Thanks. All right, I'll just drop that. I'll just drop that. Um, okay. How's that?
That's better.
Okay. Um, I had seen somewhere that there were also going to be garages. Is that... No?
No. No, there was covered parking attached to the building, more of a carport rather than garage.
And I'd just like to tack on a little bit to what Melody was touching on. There's an enormous amount of lodging expansion happening just to our south. I mean, really substantial. So directly across from the Culinary Institute is, of course, Bellfield, the community, you know, that will be a live work situation, but in addition, a proposed one hundred and thirty-four room hotel, I believe. There's also... The Culinary is doing a project with Marriott, I believe, that's a ninety-eight million dollar project. I'm not sure how many rooms, but also right there. Then, does the psychiatric center redo? Is that a hotel as well?
A long way is from completion.
From completion.
Let's just say from start.
No, they're knocking things down. There's actions.
Well, there's a long way between knocking it down and building it.
Okay. Um, the point being is simply by adding Maribou's rooms, that added fifty percent more lodging rooms to the village of Rhinebeck than it had prior. We are having just, you know, most of the attractions, so to speak, in terms of the things that people... The visitor attractions happen to actually be in Hyde Park, Culinary, Vanderbilt, Rose Valley, you know, the mall. And I, you know, I know that our guests end up going down there to participate in those activities and end up doing a little bit of shopping and dining here. But part of our appeal is precisely that we're not that strict with, you know, mega... You know, that's what keeps Rhinebeck and Northern Dutchess in particular. I don't think there's a person in this room that wants to see Northern Dutchess look more like Southern Dutchess, right? And we're counting and hoping that, you know, there's ardent defenders of... You know, it's not an accident that the village looks the way it does. It looks the way it does because there are strict rules about it. And the most prized and, you know, beloved and, you know, sort of precious communities in this world, in this country certainly, and the world, are because the community looks out for... You know, it's on guard so that, you know, big swell, you know, swells of change don't happen. And so... But it's also inch by inch, right? We let this one, we let this one, we let this one, we let... And then the next thing you know, you're living in big box strip mall territory. So there's a lot... The concern is, you know, maybe doing the feasibility studies and, you know, can there... Is there justification on an annual basis? Yes. Are there ten weekends a year that there's a deficit of rooms in the vicinity? Absolutely. Does that warrant another sixty room hotel? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comment they'd like to make? Okay. What I would like to do is the motion to continue this public hearing until April sixth at seven oh five P M.
Seven ten.
What?
Seven ten.
Seven ten.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Very good. So we'll see you all back on April sixth at seven ten.
Thank you.
Okay. Our final public hearing tonight, Michael DeCola, Dino Howl LLC, Middle Road Site Plan Special Use Center. Michael, do you want to say anything?
I think a lot is considered. It's basically on your hands, Michael.
Oh, boy. Thank you, Michael. I guess the only question that we did come up a few times, Michael, was that there was a discussion of possibly voluntarily, at your discretion, adding a few trees along the road as...
I agree with the conversation or whatever.
Okay. Is whether or not the question that was that they voluntarily, you know, do you really put a few trees along the road as screening?
So I said this, that I will have discussions after this. When you bring it up in this context, because of the power imbalance of me being an applicant and you being the board, not yet ruled on this, it's incredibly comfortable, and I don't think it's appropriate. But I will say to the community council, I would be happy to meet with you, anyone, and talk about screening and advocate.
Okay. Um, anything else from members of the planning board?
I have... Yeah. On the plans, I would like to just have a note added that shows the area that's been installed for your personal use. I'd like the plans, when they come in and they're final, to show a note stating where the panels are that have been installed for your personal use versus the ones that would be used under this application tonight. It's just an additional note to the plans.
So there are two different applications. You already got the...
Right, but the cross-reference, just a note on the plans that says which ones, you know, and designates that, you know, just kind of a little box showing.
I think we already have.
Which or which. Just because I think it's important to cross-reference the difference between what's on which project.
If you don't mind, I'm Kyle, I represent the developers on Sonic. We did get a fully permitted building permit for the usage of the onsite system for the meters on the property. That is outlined in the site plan, they're shaded a different color, and there was a note called add out. So which portion's for onsite use and then proposed, what's ruled out is for use onsite.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from members of the planning board?
I don't think there's an answer on whether a variance is required for setbacks and not one.
It's, it's in the, it's in the resolution that we have, under section 1G533, which exempts agricultural lands from setbacks along scenic roads.
Even when there's an additional use?
It, it just exempts the agricultural lands, it's an agricultural farm, it's also in District 20, so it's agricultural use. And it doesn't refer to any exceptions to our references of its agricultural land, which this clearly is. Any questions from members of the public? All right, I have a resolution which, I, what do you want to think about, Michael?
I like hearing you.
You just like to see me suffer, don't you?
Of course.
Okay, exactly, I know, I know. Can I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Very good. All right. Under Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby access follows in the application of Michael DeCola for site plan approval and special use permit under Town Code Chapter 125 and Section 125 47 for installation of solar panels on existing structures on Mill, on Mill Road in the RA10 Zone District. The action is classified as Type 2 under SEACER under Part 3767, 67.5 C15, with regulations pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. As this project, the proposed action proposes the installation of solar energy arrays on an existing structure, and the structure is not one listed on the National or State Historic Register of Historic Places, locally within a district listed in the National or State Register of Historic Places, and determined by the Commissioner of the Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places pursuant to Sections 14.07 or 421 of the Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation Law, or, within a district that has been determined by the Commissioner of the Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation to be listed on the State Register of Historic Places pursuant to Sections 14.07 or 421 of the Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation Law. One, based upon review of submitted information including reports from the planning board members and CAD members on their site visit to the project property, the planning board finds that proposed work is consistent with objectives and regulations of Chapter 125. Based upon the documentation reviewed by the planning board and upon the discussion and reasoning set forth herein, with respect to the application of special use permit authorized work, A finds the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with the general standards for special use permits, Sec. 4, Chapter Town Code, Chapter 125, Section 12567, finds proposed work and intended use to be consistent with specific standards found in Town Code, Chapter 125, Section 12547, Solar Energy Systems, as amended by the Town Board on January 2nd, 2020, and grants the requested special use permit conditional upon receipt of site plan approval by the planning board. Based upon all the documentation reviewed by the planning board and upon discussion and reasoning set forth herein, with respect to the application for site plan approval, finds the proposed work and intended use to be consistent with Town Code, Chapter 125, Section 12575, improves the application, includes the application materials and plans of Hudson So, with the most recent revision date of December 11th, 2017. Does that sound right?
Revision to the site plan?
Yes.
No.
That's not the right date?
No.
We will provide you with the right date?
Yeah, the right, the correct date was submitted with the original application to the planning board, that was what, a couple months ago? The most recent one?
Okay, if you would just get the exact date, and we will correct the convenience to show that. Authorizing the planning board to stamp and sign the above cited site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of low conditions and requirements in six pounds of the adoption of this resolution. Submission of the above cited site plan and the form and numbers specified in Town Code Chapter 125, except as may be modified to a lesser number by the chair in consideration of filing and distribution requirements, including therein all required stamps, seals, and certifications. Paying any outstanding fees and/or reversal amounts due in counter Rhinebeck related review and processing of applications submitted to this resolution, receipt of all approvals, authorizations, or certifications required in herein from any other town, county, state, or other agencies required to undertake the proposed action. And we also have under this an approval resolution in additional detail. The planning board is in a unique situation reviewing this project. The proposed installation of a roof-mounted solar power plant on an existing structure is the first of its kind in review pursuant to Town Code, Town Law, Zoning Law, Chapter 12547. Consequently, the planning board has exerted an extra effort to exercise care and diligence in the conduct of its review of this proposed project. The project brought about an application with the Zoning Board of Appeals, Case Number 975, which resulted in the decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals, which found the current zoning law requires a development proposing to install a rooftop solar power plant on an agriculture building in a residential zoning district to screen a solar power plant. Subsequent to the ZVA finding, the Town Zoning Review Group, starting in March 2019, and ultimately the Town Board, worked to address the issue identified in Case Number 975, with the applicant putting their project on hold while the settlement was underway. The Town Board directed the Town Planner and the Attorney to the Town to draft a local law incorporating recommended changes to the zoning code, and the local law was submitted to the Town Board on August 12th, 2019. An amendment to Chapter 125747 was approved by the Town Board on January 2nd, 2020, and filed with the State of New York on January 16th, 2020. Regarding input on the proposed project, throughout the course of this review, the planning board has received numerous comments from adjacent landowners, surrounding neighbors, and members of the public, through several public hearings and via written comments. Early in the process, and in no small part as a result of public comment, the primary concern voiced by adjacent landowners, surrounding neighbors, and members of the public was identified as being the visibility of the installation for Mill Road and Scenic Road. The planning board's assessment of the project, field views, and consideration of submitted concerns resulted in the applicant submitting a visual assessment dated August 31st, 2018. This analysis was reviewed by George James. The visual assessment was presented to the Town, and the letter was submitted to the planning board dated October 6th, 2018. The Town also received a comment letter from Seana Hudson dated October 25th, 2019, regarding the proposed solar amendment to be announced through this application, albeit somewhat indirectly. All letters and comments are on file in the Town Talk. Since the project was submitted for review and consideration by the planning board, the applicant has made changes to the configuration of the project. The most significant change was the installation of solar panels on the existing shading structure located closest to Mill Road. These panels were permitted to be installed as an accessory use as they were for onsite consumption. Throughout its review of the project since 2018, the planning board has taken public input, heard from the applicant, and the professional staff, and received outside assistance from the Town Planner Consultant, Planning Board Attorney, and Visual Assessment Professional. Subsequent to the input received, zoning, rezoning adoption by the Town Board, and filing of the rezoning of the State of New York, questions were raised regarding potential health. Chapter 12548 requires screening for non-residential uses in Chapter 12533, special setbacks on scenic roads and scenic areas should be applied to this project application. In January 2019, the planning board asked the zoning enforcement officer about a curpitation regarding this potential conflict, and the ZEO sent me the letter to the planning board dated February 3rd, 2020. The ZEO stated summarized hearing that the recently adopted local law is specific in its intent to clarify screening requirements for rooftop solar power applications, and is therefore applicable to this project. It is her opinion that the intent of the Town Board in acting the recent law, amending the solar code, was to, quote, "prevent the planning board from requiring screening or obscuring of rooftop solar power plants," end quote, with only three exceptions, none of which apply to this project. With regard to the applicability to this installation of the requirements found in Section 12533, special setbacks on scenic roads and in scenic areas, subsection 125-33B5 exempts agricultural project, property from these requirements, stating that, quote, "notwithstanding the foregoing provisions, these regulations do not apply to any land used for agricultural purposes using sound agricultural practices as determined by the New York State Department of Agricultural Markets for forestry operations conducted and in them consistent with timber harvesting guidelines as published by the New York Department of Environmental Conservation," end quote. The property which is the subject of this application is land in agricultural use and the structures of homes the solar plant will be located are agricultural in agricultural use. In addition, the land itself is located in New York State Agricultural District 20. During the course of our review, we received public comment which condemned that Section 12548 of our Town Zoning Law entitled "requiring screening for non-residential uses" applies to this project. If you do not agree, we are aware that our Town Board amended Section 12547 of the zoning law specifically to address the types of screening that would apply to applications for the group of solar power plants. In the wake of the Town Zoning Board of Appeals decision that held that Section, that zoning law, Section 12548, applied to solar power plants, Local Law Number 1220. Amended, amended Section 12547L14 is very specific in its application to the Dune Howard application, as the amendment applies to solar power plants. Further, at Section 12547I14, which is entitled "obscuring and screening of ground-mounted and solar, rooftop solar power plants," says explicitly and directly in subsection B that no obscuring or screening shall be required of rooftop solar installations except in certain circumstances which do not apply here. The direct explicit language of Section 12547I14B applies squarely to the solar power plant proposed by Dune Howard. This view is supported by Section 238 of the New York State Statutes Law, which provides that whenever there is a general or specific, whether there are general and specific provisions in the same statute, the general does not overrule the particular, but applies only with a particular provision that is not applicable. Based on all the information detailed above, the planning board assessed this project, utilizing professional input received, utilizing required sections of the zoning code for proposed project under the direction of the ZEO's finding, the screening is not to be required of the applicant for the rooftop solar power plant and for the device specifically noted by the Town Planning Board attorney. Could I please hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? I will fold the board. Kathy, Woody.
Aye.
Edna.
Aye.
Sharon.
No.
Melody. And I go out. So, we can, we can now have that discussion.
You want to do it here?
What?
Do you want to do it here?
Whatever, whatever you're most comfortable doing.
Do you want to do it now?
No, whatever, whatever you feel most comfortable with, Michael. Maybe you want to do it on the site, maybe it's whatever, however you feel most comfortable.
So, I'm going to take the opportunity to try and explain to you why asking me to volunteer for that was so uncomfortable for me. It is my impression that it's your job as a board, which, that, what do you call this? Resolution?
A resolution?
Yeah. Resolution demonstrated to support the applicant and help them follow the law in special, in a use permit. The law is there, and we're supposed to be working here together to meet the terms of the law. That's created by a legislative body. And a process, it involves voters. I was told, when I first got here, when was it, a few years ago? For this project? No. That you guys were not a legislative body, and you couldn't interpret the law. And that that was something you were going to hold yourselves to. I think you have to hold yourselves to that on both sides. Hold yourselves to that. So when I hear that in the application process, you want me to volunteer to do something that is not the law. The law is, well, you know what the Ag Law is. What's the Ag Law with regards to screening? Who is responsible for screening for agricultural properties? Is it the farmer or the neighbors?
I'm not going to have that conversation with you.
It's part of this discussion about screening.
Michael, one could also make the argument that chose to run the existing zoning law prior to the amendment. Screening is required for all commercial uses, which is why the ZEO made the determination that she made under the old zoning law before the amendment, and the ZVA upheld that, which is then why the Town Board then chose.
They chose to change it because they felt that the rooftop use in this, in a rooftop use of the solar panels should not be held to that standard. So it was clearly, that was clearly addressed.
And that's fine that they did that, but the law originally did require screening.
No, I know, that's why we went through all that discussion, which I did.
I know.
But now we're talking about...
Do you understand the point of this, Michael? What is the point of this?
The point, I think, what we would like to see, if you wish to do it, Michael, and as I say, it's entirely up to you, you have the approval, you're not in any obligation to do anything further. I mean, if you choose, you know, to work with your neighbors, you know, just, that's up to you.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that.
And that's entirely up to you.
Yes.
There's no obligation whatsoever for you to do that.
That's right, that's right. And so, to make it a volunteer condition or implication in this process also takes away my ability to generously offer it after I've achieved an approval. In some way, by bringing it up here, you've taken it away as me, from, from me, as something that I can give to my neighbors.
Actually, Michael, when you said that you felt uncomfortable with it, that you felt that's what was happening, I believe I said that we will then go ahead with the application to, rather than with a resolution to approve it. But you don't need to speak to it now, you don't need to answer now that you're doing it now. And so we're at that point now where it's approved, you're under that obligation, it's entirely up to you, which you wish to do with your neighbors.
Which I felt like it was at all times, but I just, I want to talk about that process because, to me, it's uncomfortable and it feels tainted, and I wanted to give you that feedback.
Okay, well, we've received it.
Thank you.
And you do have the approval, and what you choose to do subsequently is entirely up to you.
So with regard to the group of some standing up here, I know how hard this was for everybody. And I really do appreciate your effort, even if you don't agree with it. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I just, I think it's only fair to say too, that there are a number of us who feel that solar is vitally important to this community and to this country. And from that standpoint, I'm very grateful that you're doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two more items. I can't hear my voice. Okay, we have two procedurals. KTH2 Management LLC, T Court LLC, Grindel Valley LLC, nursing home, CO. Oh, this is for underground utilities to be shared by these properties.
Okay. Is that Sheet 2? Yeah, is it? Is it okay if I just go to Sheet 3? Sheet 2 is basically a plan showing the existing conditions for all properties. I guess I should formally start that. Hi, Mark Marinsky, I'm representing four applicants in this...
I can read them to you if you want.
Excuse me?
I can read them to you.
Yeah, that would be...
I'll memorize them.
And so, and so those applicants are KTH2, which is Astor Courts, Grindel Valley, which is a former cloth property, T Court LLC, which is formerly Robert Duffy's property, and Ferncliff Nursing Home. And so the, the purpose of this application is to, to move forward with a certain aspect of the project for, for those properties. There's, there's obviously, you know, we, we put on hold a review of the master plan for these four properties, you know, due to some changes being proposed and some additional information that was, has been requested to be, to be included in the master plan. And so that process is still ongoing. The reason for this particular individual application for those, for these four parcels is basically to, it, it goes hand in hand with previous, previous applications approvals that have been granted by this board. And simply it's, and, and this particular application, the reason that we're moving forward in not including this as part of the master plan, portions of it have been previously included in the master plan for, you know, for some, for some of the properties, is that this work being, I just lost the word.
Contemplated.
Contemplated, is basically over sections of the property that have been previously improved, have been disturbed, and so, you know, I'll fund to get to it, that this is just essentially for installation of utilities. And one of the reasons that we're, it's, it's in front of this board now is that, as you know, the, one of the previous approvals was for the, you know, the renovation of Astor Courts, and that work has been ongoing for over a year. And it's, you know, it's scheduled to be, you know, completed August, September. And one of the key components to finishing the work at Astor Courts is being able to provide power for that, for that structure. It's, you know, because of the mechanical systems that are being proposed, three-phase, three-phase power is necessary in order to power that, power that building. So this particular application includes that for Astor Courts, and it's essentially providing for underground utility installation for all four of those properties that I've mentioned. And the goal is, is not just to provide that underground utility, it's, through underground utilities, it's also removal of any of the overhead utilities and poles that are, that presently exist on the property. We tried to do that before, but it was... We tried to do that before, it was before actual sale and inclusion of this group of the Coffe property, and at times, Sue was not willing to include that. But now, we have the ability to, like I said, remove that, those overhead utilities and put everything underground. In addition to that, and I'll get to a plan, and I'll go through on the plan in a minute, there was, this application also contemplated, got the word now, to rebuild the existing service drive to Astor Courts. And included with that, I don't know, I think it was, it was one, actually, one of the first applications I made to this board on behalf of K P H two, was the repair of the existing twin culverts, twin box culverts, stone box culverts underneath the rail, the rail bed that goes through K P H two, which were in disrepair and actually caused damage to the property during Hurricane Irene. So, once we repaired those, those box culverts, the downstream drainage needed some work too. We knew that going into it. So, included with, you know, repairing and bringing the service drive for Astor Courts back to life, we'll also repair and upgrade the initial, there's two initial culverts that are directly downstream of those box culverts we repaired, and then also this service drive will now cross over the stream that goes through that property, which is, which is part of the runoff that, of the two smaller culverts that we're replacing, and runoff that comes from Ferncliff Nursing Home also. So, there'll be a large block, box culvert bridge that's going to be replaced as part of that. The underground utilities will go along that drive, so it's, so it's twofold for K P H two. The underground utilities will also include Ferncliff Nursing Home. That's overhead power that goes to Ferncliff Nursing Home to the north from Astor Courts and T Court. So, that is now going to be, that overhead, those overhead utilities will be removed and will all go underground. The same thing with T Court, Robert Duffy's former property, that that does have underground power, but telecommunications are lacking on that piece. And so, telecommunications are also part of this application, all underground. It's approximately, it's approximately sixty-five, sixty-six hundred lineal feet of underground utility that's going to be installed, along with that, the service drive that I just mentioned. And then finally, two other components that will be included in this application. One is for the powerhouse, the previous application approved by this board for the powerhouse, strictly for the building. And now, we're handling some of the site drainage for that building, roof drainage, unbelievably intricate roof drainage system associated with it. And once again, through pure renovation of what Astor originally had for the powerhouse. So, it's handling the roof drainage for that and some, and some of the site runoff, along with a small improvement of a patio on the south side of the powerhouse, along with a provision for having wastewater disposal at that, at the powerhouse. I've had extensive discussions with the Duchess County Department of Health, and they have agreed to approve just a pump-out system. So, it'll be a holding tank that would be pumped out periodically, just, just because of the anticipated use of that building, you know, used maybe once or twice a year, and they just, applicants would like to have the ability to have sanitary facilities at that location. And then finally, one of the things that I have been working on for years at, for K P H two Astor Courts, is the existing sanitary system. And the existing sanitary system has consumed quite a bit of my time to determine its actual location and connection into various other, you know, parts of the building that didn't always, did not include sanitary waste, it was also stormwater. So, there was a combination of sanitary and stormwater that was going into the sanitary system. After utilizing several thousand gallons of dyed water and reviewing all, going through the archives of all the plans that Astor had for those buildings, it's finally able to figure out a way to separate the stormwater and sanitary. So, I've been in touch with the Duchess County Department of Health about it, and we're handling it as a repair, but it's just, it's now essentially providing two new sections of infrastructure, septic tanks, adding two septic tanks to the building and then having the, and then just separating the sanitary and having it go to an existing absorption field that remains, that exists on the property now. And so, that's, that's in summary what this application is. I can take you through quickly on, Jim, if you can bring up sheet three, if that's, if that's okay with this board.
Can you zoom in a little?
Yeah, if you can zoom in just a little bit, Jim, that'd be great. Starting here, this is the, here's the current access into, that's great, current access into Astor Courts and T House located here. And so, here's the existing driveway. This dash line that you see is the proposed location of the underground utilities. And so, as I mentioned before, this, these underground utilities are simply to include power and telecommunications. And so, this is, we're going to travel along the existing driveway, so no new disturbance associated with it. There's an existing, and as you head west into the property, here is Brindle Valley or Coffe's former property. You can see that there'll be a, there'll be a section that branches off and connects into the existing facilities for, for Brindle Brook, for Coffe's property. There's an existing overhead line that goes in this way, that's going to be removed. And then, this, this will, there's a pole here that's going to drop down underground, all underground, going through here. As you, as you go further to the west, here's, here's Fern, here's the parking area for Ferncliff Nursing Home. The nursing home's located up here. This is all existing overhead utility. That's all available underground, connected into a manhole structure here and feed Ferncliff Nursing Home. This, you can see here, here is the existing overhead lines going through Brindle Brook property. Those, those are all removed. Overhead, overhead lines down, gone. Same thing with all the utility poles associated with it. And then, as we head to the west, if you could pan a little bit for me, Jim? Thank you. It's going to split off, right at this junction point. This is the service drive that I've talked about going to Astor Courts. Here's the, here's the old railroad bed. As I, as I mentioned before, going to T Court, which the old T House is located up here, there's a, there, when Duffy improved this, he put in underground power, and that's sufficient. What this dash, dash line represents will be telecommunications going to that building, essentially going right alongside of it, along an existing driveway that goes here, turns and goes to the west, and then ultimately connects into, into the T House. Then, what also happens is this, and this is, this, once again, three-phase power continues through this way, three-phase power to here, three-phase power now continues to the west. And you see, it goes along the west here, if you could pan a little bit for me, Jim? Thank you. This way. Thank you. That continues through here, and then, you know, cut across, go under, be placed right on the old railroad bed, and then back into, back into a common junction point here with the service going, a service then going and feeding into, into Astor Courts right here. So, that provides the main electrical and telecommunications feed for Astor Courts. That will continue, that underground utility is now going to continue to the west, and then it's going to loop around, and it's also going to connect into, into the powerhouse here also. So, that, that power is all going to come in, into here. It'll be a, it's a three-phase power through here, this is single-phase power through here. At the same time, since we're, since we'll have a utility trench here, we're also going to run water supply, and as I mentioned before, there's going to be now an option for sanitary located at the, at the powerhouse. So, on the south end of the powerhouse, I mentioned before, that will be a, will be a tank, a concrete tank that'll, a holding tank, that'll just be pumped out periodically, more than likely just once a year. And then, and then, the same thing, there'll be a water supply and electric going to, going to this, going to the powerhouse structure. Just, just running back through, as I mentioned before, improvement of this, here's the improvement of the service drive into Astor Courts. So, this first location right here is where, see, this, this right here, these were the twin box culverts that we replaced two or three years ago, that were in disrepair. We replaced those under the, under the old rail bed. And now, there's two small culverts here that are going to be replaced with a single, single box culvert. And then, there'll be also the service drive crossing, it's going to now, we're now going to span this stream, and then we'll have a box culvert spanning the stream and then going through, going through here. These two, these two culverts have been designed in such a way that we, in accordance with regulations adopted by the Army Corps of Engineers, no permitting is required. It's, there's nationwide permits that are in place to allow for these. But since, since they are in the adjacent area of a stream or wetland under the Town of Rhinebeck, the appropriate, wetlands disturbance application has been made to this board for this particular section through here. And also, I should note, we noted the total disturbance area for the alignment of all the underground utilities. There are sections that go through that adjacent area and have been considered as part of this application. And then finally, before I mentioned, I mentioned the, finally, the separation of the sanitary and stormwater for this, for this structure. There'll be a septic tank located here, it's all, there's all new plumbing is taking place inside Astor Courts. So, septic tank here, septic tank here, they'll connect into a manhole, and then right over in here, yeah, let's see, oh, well, here's, here's this, these controls here, you can see, that was part of the filtration system that Astor had in place for withdrawing filtering water as part, as part of the steam generation associated with the state. But right through here is an existing absorption field. We're going to tie right into the existing absorption field, and then the stormwater, all the roof water and any stormwater continues off to where it's going now, ultimately finding a discharge location into the Hudson River. So, that, all that, all that infrastructure remains in place. We just take the sanitary out of that and finally have a known destination for it. So, I didn't mean to be so long-winded, but that's, that's, that's the summary of this application.
Questions? Okay, yeah, I have a resolution.
Will you entertain comments in public?
Well, it's not a public hearing at this point, because we don't have an application yet.
All right.
But we will, we have a public hearing.
Very good.
K P H two management LLC, T Court, Brindle Valley, Ferncliff Nursing Home, Site Plan with special permit requirements. Town of Rhinebeck, County Board of Hypersus follows on the application by those just named. For site better use, special improvement in wetlands permit. Okay. Within the H P twenty-two preservation zoning district. Accept the application and supporting documents as adequate to further review by the planning board and advisory public. Considerize the case action as part of procedure for formal development of public views for proof. Schedule the public hearing on April sixth at six forty. Six forty. And direct per for undertaking or otherwise cause notice in post in the act of... Who would like to go on site this?
What part do you?
Woody? Who's joining, Woody?
I guess I am.
My show.
Yeah, that's a step up for me. You come to field visit to the project site and record their observations to the county public hearing. In accordance with Town Code Chapter nine, Constitution Advisory Board, refers the application to County Board of Advisory Board for viewing and comment. In accordance with Town Code Chapter one one eight, County Water and Land District Review, refers the application to the Water and Land Advisory Committee for viewing and comment concerning the system of L W R P. Refer to the application to County Stories for viewing comment concerning external aspects of the property and comment on the potential subdivision, on the potential, on the potential project. What's that?
Also, it's...
Oh, and, and your, how do you, two thirty-nine, refer to the county plan and the development for viewing comment?
We're not going to do that.
Ah, yes, and, what's the name?
Historic preservation. That has to work to formulate a, sort of preservation.
No.
Um, historic and archaeological, historic preservation and archaeological.
Work to nursery home, as you know, three-phase?
They do have three phases, overhead.
Okay. Given what Kathy just said refers to that committee for viewing comment on historic and archaeological components, potential components of this project.
I'll update the resolution accordingly. I'll update the resolution accordingly.
Okay, thank you. He's got it, Gretchen.
We'll take care of it.
You'll update it. Okay, authorized without prejudice to any information or comment committed to the public hearing or may arise based on both the above sudden field visit, preparation of a working record and approval of resolution for the county board's consideration on April sixth, or as may be later timely. Good, I hear most approve.
Come on.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
There we go. All right, we have one more tonight. Nice to see you again.
Roger Smith, Henry Place, four three seven, route three oh eight. Second plan is special use for the construction of an additional, of an issue in existing residence and convert a barn to a second and attached accessory road.
Good evening. Here representing Roger Smith, who is here, Roger's here, also part of the design team, Mike Verne, the architect, is also here, and then Mike Walsh, representing Walcott Builders, is also here. So, this is a application that is both to this board and also to the Z E O. And so, so the, the project site is located, this is New York State Route three oh eight, and this is Pilgrim's Progress Road right here. And so, it's approximately fifteen acres in size, I can get the exact acreage here. It's fifteen point two seven seven acres in size with multiple existing structures located on the property. On the, I guess it would be the north side of three oh eight, the Lansman Hill also cuts, cuts through the property. It's, you know, the property is a little oddly shaped, there's a little, you know, extension to the southwest here, and it goes along three oh eight. So, as you, as you enter into the property from three oh eight, there's an existing drive, and as, as you first enter the property, here is an existing accessory structure. And so, what I've done for both this board...
And so what I've done for both this board and also for the ZDA, I've just numbered the accessory structures, because this application is mainly about the accessory structures on the property, existing and proposed. So this building right here that I labeled, just, Jim, could you maybe zoom in to this area right here? Because that's kind of the, that's kind of the part of the entire application. So accessory structure number one is a, it's twofold. There's a stable, there's an existing stable there, because this was, property was formerly owned by Stefano Ferrari. And so this, there's a stable associated with it here, and then on this section, westernly portion of the building, there was also a dwelling unit. There was an apartment that was located in that area, excuse me, in that building. So this, this building exists, and so the stable and that apartment currently exist on the site. The existing residence is located right here, right? So then you come in the driveway, there's a circular driveway, residence is located right here. And the part of this application is that there'll be, in addition, on the norally side of that existing residence, there's going to be an addition of some living space here and also a garage. And so that garage is going to be attached to the principal dwelling. And so even though, based on Rhinebeck's code, even though the garage is attached to the principal dwelling, it's an accessory structure. So this is accessory structure number two as part of this application, and I've labeled this. Continuing to move around, and I'll get to what we're, I'm just trying to give the board an overview of existing conditions, and then I'll get to what we're asking from this board and also from the ZDA. You know, so then associated with that, you know, obviously, you want, you know, connection into the garage, garage doors are located on the north side. There'll be a new section of driveway, small section of driveway that's going to be constructed, that apartment turnaround area here. There's a small shed located right here. That's going to remain. That's existing accessory structure number three, and that remains. Continuing to go to the north, there's an existing pool, concrete patio, and then there's an existing red barn. This red barn, this exists, and it's accessory structure number four. And part of this proposal is conversion of that red barn into a detached accessory dwelling unit. Once again, back to this one, this already exists as a detached accessory dwelling unit. The proposal is to make this, now convert this into a detached accessory dwelling unit. Continuing to the north, and this is it, this is our last accessory structure for number five, there's a woodshed here. And so that's appropriately labeled accessory structure number five. And in the lower right corner of my drawing, I provided a summary of all these accessory structures, and there are associated floor areas, left corner, the other right. Sorry. There we go. And here it is, I provided a summary of all the accessory structures. So here, starting with number one, so I say stable with apartment, and I give you a total, and then there's a certain portion of it that is associated with agriculture. And so based on conversation with the zoning administrator, the agricultural portion of this is not considered, is not part of the floor area to be considered as part of this application. And so you can see, I broke out how much of the floor area is associated with residential land. Same thing with accessory structure number two. It's a new building, and it's part of the principal residence, but it's an attached garage, and based on your code, it's still defined as an accessory structure. So there's the floor area associated with that. And same for the shed, that's the shed right adjacent to the new garage going in. And then accessory structure number four is that red barn conversion to a detached dwelling unit that we're proposing. And so there's the floor area associated with that. And then finally, accessory structure number five is that is the shed by the red barn, and there's the floor area associated with that. So the specific application to this board is for, and I have to read it, and I provided, in the documents that I provided this board, I also gave you a copy of the application to the ZDA, and vice versa. I gave it to the ZDA, because it, you know, it kind of goes back and forth here on what we have to do. So it's application for site plan and special permit to this board. And so the application for site plan is we're constructing, we have a new structure, right? So that new structure is the attached, the attached garage to the existing residence. So that's a new structure, and that requires site plan. We also have proposed detached accessory structures, two of them located on here, that require special permit application to this board for detached accessory structures. And then finally, because, and so you see that there's five accessory structures. So normally, you're allowed three in a residential zone, except in this zone where the acreage is greater than 10, we have 15 acres, the planning board, not the zoning board, approves the number of, it's a special permit application to this board for approving the number of accessory structures if you're greater than three. So that's in front of you, that's in front of the planning board. Just, and I know it's getting late, so I don't want to keep everybody here too long, but just to let you know, so in front of the ZDA are multiple, oh, I'm sorry, and there's one other, there's one other special permit application to this board, and I included it for major excavation. And so it's the, did I do that? I did major excavation for, you know, construction of the garage, the driveway, and what's also going, what also needs to occur with this is application to the Dutchess County Department of Health for water supply and sewage disposal. Because, so there's an existing well and septic for the residence, same well serves accessory structure number one, existing septic there, there's a, there's an existing well for the red barn, there's some type of septic system that is not on file with the Dutchess County Department of Health. And so I've been in touch with Dave Pearson, and I have my direction on how to move forward with the Dutchess County Department of Health. Ultimately, you know, we're hopeful that the existing septic systems are adequate, and then it will just be a design of a reserve area for all the accessory structures that have dwelling units associated with them. So that component will be, you know, part of it. It'll be an application to the Health Department that's going to occur concurrently with application to this board and application to the ZDA. So then back to the ZDA quickly, our application is for area variances, because for those detached accessory structures, you're only allowed 900 square feet. When you go to that, I got it down now, the lower left corner of the drawing, if you take a look at how much floor area is associated with it, it's greater than 900 square feet. So Michelle has prepared a denial letter that outlines those floor areas that we need for the detached accessory structures, and the total floor area in excess of 1,500 square feet for those accessory structures, that is part of, that is the application to the ZDA, and that the ZDA needs to consider. We've already made our presentation to the ZDA, so then, and we are actually scheduled, it's March 18th, we're scheduled to go in front of the ZDA on March 18th with our public hearing for the presentation. So I won't talk anymore if the board has any questions with regard to the architecture that's being proposed for the project. Michael's here to discuss it. It was included in our application documents. He has floor plans, building elevations, perspectives, you know, rendering, some things like that.
Any questions for hearing none? I'd like to say another resolution.
Okay.
The Town of Rhinebeck, planning board, hereby access follows on the application by Roger Smith, the site plan and special use permit, under Town Code Chapter 125 and Town Subject 101, and within the RSC5 rural countryside building district. Accepts the application supporting documents as adequate for further review by the planning board and advisors in public. Classifies the proposed action as type null or secret, which coordinate environmental review as included. Schedules a public hearing on that hearing for April 6th at 6:35, when direct per for undertake or otherwise cause noticing and coaching narrow. Tell us plenty of members of Melody, and who would like to go with Melody?
I'll go.
Sharon? Conduct a field visit to the site and report your observations to the time of public hearing. In accordance with Town Code Chapter 9, Conservation Advisory Board, refer the application to the Conservation Site and your board for review and written comments concerning environmental factors. Number six, refer the application to both the town historian and the county store review and archaeology committee for review and comment concerning historical aspects of the property and comment on the potential subdivision. Do we need to do anything about the county?
I'd say that.
Okay. Authorizes without prejudice, do any information or comment that may be presented at the public hearing and may arise based on both the bulk site field visit referrals. Referral working record, approval of resolution for the planning board's consideration, April 6th or as may be later timely. Could I have motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have on the agenda. That's enough. Woody, could I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, this is manager.